Wendy does a great job of removing the name tags of people that we do know. We'll make it.
All right, we can get started since it's not a hearing. It's a study session anyway. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. I opened the study session of the Planning Commission at 6:31 PM. It's July 14th, 2025. Okay, so tonight we have one, basically one overarching topic, and it is, well, I guess our city attorney is going to present that to us. So I will just turn it over to you.
I have this one idea where our screens aren't showing. I swear it was on. There we go. Thank you. So yes, I'll be presenting today. We have, as a reintroduction, Matasi Tillo, Senior Assistant City Attorney, generally advising on land use matters with the Planning Department, Public Works Department, and Economic Development. Today, we also have Andrea Vaughn, who is a senior planner with the Planning Department. We also have Brian Evans, who is our grounds operations supervisor, and then also Brent Soderland, who is our Director of Public Works and Utilities. I'll be presenting, but these three here are going to be my main backups for any type of public works or planning technical questions or concerns. So our agenda for tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the purpose behind the amendments and how it came to fruition, the current structure of our greenscape provisions, and the amended proposed structure that we would like to have approved, the timeline, the tentative timeline, and then we're going to leave questions for, or time for questions and/or discussion at the very end. So in 2023, our city hired, law and forestry department hired a consultant to review Title VIII, Chapter IV, Trees for Improvement Areas, to basically strengthen all of our tree regulations to take a look at the effectiveness of our code. And at this time, our consultant focused truly on Title VIII, Chapter IV, and creating a draft tree manual. These recommendations within the consultant's report included updating terminology, definitions, clarifying our permitting and licensing process, drafting and developing a tree manual for development use and for private citizen use, and then also really modernizing our language and bringing it up to today's, to what municipalities are using today. And these revisions, all in all, were to help promote best practices and align the city's goals for existing canopy preservation and keeping in mind our future tree canopy. So since 2023, forestry staff, along with the Planning Department and the city attorney's office, have been reviewing many provisions within our code. You know, we've gotten waylaid by a lot of different types of ULUC amendments here in the last year, along with legislative updates. But the one thing that we focused on was specifically Article 10-13.6, the Greenscape Design Standards, Title VIII, Chapter IV, as well as a proposed tree manual that was drafted by our consultant. And what we came to find was that there was conflicting language within the proposed tree manual, what the consultant was recommending for best practices. We found a little bit of, we found some redundant information between the ULUC, the proposed tree manual, and then also Title VIII, Chapter IV. And so from that, you know, over the course of a couple of years, the proposed amendments are coming to you today. And I'll talk a little bit about timeline and how we got here in just a second, or towards the end. So all in all, the objectives that we are attempting to meet with these proposed amendments are removing these redundant greenscape provisions within the ULUC and shifting them to our proposed tree manual, clarifying greenscape provisions within that new tree manual, including the addition of relevant terminology, providing better guidance, including an outline of best practices to contractors, private citizens, also including a lot of different, one of the things that we included a draft tree manual in the packet, but including a lot of diagrams and manuals and charts to help better guide our contractors and residents. And then lastly, consolidating our arborist licensing requirements within Title III, Chapter 16, which contains a lot of our, and many of our actually other licensing and registration regulations. So this is our current structure, as it sits today, of the city's tree regulations. We have, within the ULUC article or Section 10-13.6, which is greenscape, and then there's the list underneath it. We have Section 8.4, which focuses on trees. And then we have our proposed tree manual. And in terms of our proposed tree manual, the current structure right now is planting requirements, maintenance, warranty, irrigation standards, preservation, protection, and then mitigation, which of import includes the canopy loss formula that we'll talk about here shortly. But essentially, what, what staff is looking to do is amend both the greenscape and the trees provisions within the, within the code and either, well, combine all of the redundant provisions and pull them out of those respective sections and migrate them into the tree manual. A note on the tree licensing, which is currently within 8.4.3. So in April of this year, our city council repealed and reenacted Title III, Chapter 16 wholly regarding licensing and registration of certain types of contractors. There is currently an active effort within the Planning Department and with Public Works to complete a migration of all contractor licensing and permitting within to our permit center. So proposed amendments in the next few weeks will remove 8.4.3 arborist licensing and push it into Title III for all of our contracting contractor licensing, which includes requirements on bonding, insurance, indemnification, things, things of those nature. And I guess I should mention, the highlights in green, those are the, those are the areas that staff focused on in terms of reviewing. And there are amendments in other sections, but those, those highlights are where we focused on in terms of what we wanted to see within the tree manual and what made sense to migrate into the tree manual. So our proposed amended structure, it, it looks, so there's a little bit, there's actually quite a bit going on with our proposed tree manual and, and section 8.4 of the trees. For, for the ULUC, the two red highlights that you see in front of you, those will be consolidated and migrated into the proposed tree manual. Title VIII, IV, that is going to be a complete repeal/reenact. Reed and I went back and forth on a couple of red lines for that one. And with all of the migration, with all of the removal of redundant provisions, with a little bit of clarifying, the current form of VIII IV didn't make sense organizationally. So that one was rewritten. A lot of the substance is still there, but it was rewritten in totality. And then, you know, as I mentioned, the proposed tree manual, that is the current structure right now. Now, VIII IV and the proposed tree manual are in draft form. So we are working actively with Public Works staff and planning staff to come to a final copy of that, which likely will not be finalized, I would imagine, until a couple of weeks before the August 19th city council meeting. Title VIII IV and the tree manual do fall under the purview of Public Works and will move forward to the city council. As I mentioned, on August 19th, that's our tentative timeline. But a recommendation from this planning commission is not going to be needed for those two sections. We are looking for a recommendation on the ULUC amendments in the next few weeks. So shifting a little bit into more specifics of what is going to be migrating from the ULUC to the tree manual. And I, my intention is to keep it a little bit more broad so that we can get to any questions, concerns at the very end. But, you know, more of the specifics are within the packet and the red line provided for the ULUC, as well as the draft tree manual. So in terms of subsection B, there were revisions made to kind of differentiate between plant material requirements versus the tree, the tree plantings and the tree, and the requirements for tree plantings. So the plant material requirements are going to remain in the ULUC. However, the requirements for tree plantings and really the approved species, the prohibited species will move into, will move into the tree manual. And we also clarified the types of substitutions as well. If there are substitutions allowed for plant materials, those remain in the ULUC. Any substitutions for trees, that was migrated into the tree manual. We also removed Table A1 completely from the appendices of the ULUC. I don't have the code up right now, but it is the prohibited, or the approved, approved and prohibited tree list, if I'm not mistaken. And so that was completely shifted into the tree manual. We also did move over location standards, such as site triangle spacing and right-of-way requirements whenever planting trees, as that does fall more under the purview of Public Works. And then lastly, we reconciled the establishment period. There was a difference between the ULUC and the proposed tree manual. Our consultant recommended specific dates, and staff actually recommended specific dates to keep that establishment period within. Previously, there was a vague reference to spring-fall seasons. And so with the reconciliation and putting in specific dates, it's a little bit easier to track for staff. And you have a hard date in terms of any needs for financial guarantees. And so that kind of jumps down to the second row, the planting requirements. If there, there is that establishment period specified within the tree manual and the ULUC, and if something isn't unable to be established within that period, then we have the ability to ask for a financial guarantee in the amount of 125% of the estimated costs, which we are able to hold on to until establishment, maintenance, and inspection of whatever has been planted, has been finalized. So the next, the next slide is just a couple of the graphics that, that will be included within the tree manual, just to better help guide our contractors in terms of spacing, site triangles, location standards in general. And really what we're, you know, really what we're hoping will help in terms of best, best practices. So subsection C, in terms of protection and preservation, this is one section in the ULUC that has been completely migrated into the tree manual. In this, we are emphasizing preservation and protection of our existing landscape and canopy, as well as, you know, future canopy. We are providing minimum requirements for the canopy requirements, as well as a proposed increase, which you'll see in red line. I don't have those percentages in front of me, but there is a proposed increase in percentages in terms of what that canopy coverage needs to be. And then we clarify, there was a little bit of, not necessarily a conflict, but there was a lot of language in terms of what was needed for tree inventory, surveys, and protection plans. And so that has been condensed a little bit and clarified to better streamline what is required for each of those. And then we also provide additional graphics in terms of a tree protection zone and what we are, what we are looking for in terms of that tree protection zone, meaning including prohibited activities within that TPC, and then also any fencing that is needed, those sorts of things. And this is just another graphic in terms of what is included in the tree manual. There's, there's quite a bit that has been included in the tree manual in terms of graphics and charts that we believe, in our agreement with our consult, that we believe will help streamline this for our residents and contractors. Continuing on in subsection C, we have also completely migrated over the mitigation standards. I'm not going to touch upon every single detail within this list. As I, as I mentioned, I wanted it to be a broad, broad overview. But one item that I believe has been on the forefront of our city council, as well as staff, as well as others in the community, is our fee and lieu. We did hear upon, you know, our, our fee and lieu and potentially increasing that. And so our current rate within the code right now is $500 per replacement tree if replacement mitigation standards cannot be met, if it's impractical, if it's impractical to comply with those. And so the new proposed rate is going to be $250 per inch. There will also be an included reduction for affordable housing developments, which I believe is $75, and then a carve-out for any property owners who may have some type of verified established form of financial assistance that they're receiving from the state or from some other means. So in terms of coming up with that $250 per inch, I know that staff has completed some research. And I don't have specifics on that research, which is why I'm glad that Brian is here. But it is widely used by a few municipalities in the area. The ISA used to provide guidance on this item, but I believe that they are no longer providing guidance on what that number should be. But this is a number that staff believes would, would promote best, best manager practices based on a wide use. So this is the current language being proposed within the tree manual. There is that $250 per inch for 2024. I'm not sure if that will be updated, if council will see it here in a few weeks and want to update that. It is for discussion. I know that, as I mentioned, it has been something that has been on the forefront of their minds. We provide an example as well. We provide that affordable housing developments have that reduction to 75. And then that mitigation payment will not be applied to anybody who can show that verified form of financial assistance. And lastly, these are probably the easiest revisions to discuss. So for F and G, so buffer yard requirement, landscape plan, no changes are being made to either one of those sections. No red lines at all. You will likely not see that pop up in the packet red line. For the last row, 10-6-2.3, 10-3-4.1, 10-5-4.1, those were all reference updates to the tree manual to either remove or reference the tree manual for requirements. So in some of these different sections, we were, we referenced back to subsection C, the preservation protection section, which we completely removed. And so it was just a matter of updating those references. For the tree canopy coverage requirement, that was completely, that was a complete shift of the requirements and the associated table. I do not believe the only change in that would be the increase in percentages that was recommended by our former city forester. So timing, I, these revisions may come as a surprise. I know that, you know, it wasn't our intention to bum rush the commissioners or a council with these red lines. I think these items have been in review since 2023. As I mentioned, you know, just staff, timing, resources, a little bit of turnover. They were delayed. And we currently, if I'm not mistaken, Brent, we currently do not have a city forester. And our recent manager of grounds found another opportunity. So the recent push is really as a result of the Littleton Engineering Development Standards. And so currently, it is out for review to the public. And there are references within the tree manual, or there are references within the LEDs to the tree manual, or there are items within the LEDs that could potentially be pushed into the tree manual. And so that is something that staff is actively going through, meaning the LEDs, we're actively going through it and reviewing, I mean, line, line by line. And any, really any type of reference to tree requirements, regulations, landscaping, greenscaping, we're taking a look at what's within the LEDs and whether or not we need to clarify it within the ULUC, whether or not we need to clarify it within the tree manual. And so it's, it's quite a bit of a review of multiple different sections of our code in conjunction with LEDs. And so in, in, in an effort to coincide adoption of all these various ordinances, city staff has really put their nose to the ground these past couple of, well, this entire month, really, this past month, to review the ULUC greenscape and tree manual provisions. We believe that we're close to a final product on the tree manual. There are some items that are still being revised, updated. But we believe that the ULUC greenscape provisions are pretty much finalized at this point in terms of what we would like to remove from the ULUC and migrate it, migrate into the, either the tree manual or the repeal and reenact of VIII IV. So in terms of our intended timeline, obviously, we're here today for our study session. July 28th is the goal for the commissioner's recommendation to city council on approval of these ULUC amendments. August 11th, this could be bumped to August 11th. The reason currently our thought process is to cancel the August 11th meeting because I believe it is Western Welcome Week. So we don't necessarily want to completely inundate that entire, that entire schedule that week. I don't believe there's anything scheduled for August 11th, but I'm not 100% sure. But that being said, so our intended date is July 28th for that, for commissioner's recommendation. And then August 9th would be approval of the LEDs, which has references to the tree manual. First reading of the proposed amendments to the ULUC 10-13.6, complete repeal/reenact of VIII IV. And within that complete repeal/reenact of VIII IV, there is the formal adoption by city council of our tree manual. So we essentially have to have it finalized a week before. And then the amendment to 316, which, as a reminder, that is where we will be, including the licensing regulations for arborists. And so first reading will be August 9th for the ordinances. And, you know, I understand that there's going to be a little bit of a gap between the adoption of LEDs, which is going by resolution, as well as the adoption of the tree manual, which will have to go first reading, second reading, I think there'll be two weeks. But, you know, city attorney and I talked, we don't believe that this is going to be significant enough to cause complex issues in terms of the application of these items moving forward. So with that, that is all I have for the commissioners, and hopefully we can answer your questions, comments, concerns.
I have a question about the rescinding and revision of VIII-IV, which is part of the ULUC, it's part of the whole city code. When the tree manual is adopted, will it then be nested as the new VIII.4? Or will it just be referenced from VIII-IV?
So it will be a reference from VIII. So the tree manual is going to be its own living document. And within that repeal/reenact, we will be formally adopting the tree manual within it. So it'll just be a line item, just like the LEDs will be a line item within the ULUC. And so there'll just be specific references throughout.
No questions?
VIII.4, or that section to repeal/reenact, is that largely going to be empty? Or is it going to be a fairly long, of similar length and structure to what is there now?
Similar length and structure to what, what is there right now. I have it right in front of me. And so what we did with that one was we updated terminology.
Let me pull up, because I don't want to tell you incorrectly.
So in terms of, it will largely be same, similar. The substance is still there. So we updated, we added definition of caliper, critical root zone. We were using caliper quite, I mean, throughout, I think, the ULUC and VIII IV. And what our consultants, you know, kind of recommended was that we need to update our language to diameter at standard height, DSH. We went ahead and defined removal, pruning. The authority within VIII IV is really where we are going to adopt the tree manual formally, which city council will do, and that it will supplement, but not supersede the requirements of the code, including the ULUC. And then essentially, everything else is there. Licensing, it's just going to have a quick reference to Title III 16. Owners' responsibilities and general provisions will still be there. Let me go back to that.
One.
Owners' responsibilities, general provisions will still be there.
They're also in the tree manual, right? There's going to be things like removal.
Yes, so with the owners, yes.
I'll tell you, this big picture, we're going from a situation where someone who's going to build something or try and do a development project goes from having two documents to reference to three. To me, that's, that adds just another wrinkle to have to sort out. And especially when you have VIII IV, having things like, still having the removal and permitting requirements for removals. And then there's also the tree manual with similar section. That was my first concern about this process is that the internal sort of discussions that have happened around it have not had builders, developers who actually live and breathe. builder developers who actually live and breathe with their projects involved in this discussion. So the added layer, I mean, I, I can see where a tree manual would be like a nice sort of single document to refer to, but you still have ULUC, title 10 and title eight sections that have to reconcile what's then also referencing an outside manual, which it's kind of seems more cumbersome than it might have been to have the tree manual just be part of the code. So that was, that was something, that was a concern I had, that, that an outside consultant who is giving you advice on what to do. Maybe there were things that seemed simple to them or would be isolatable in a tree manual, but actually make it more difficult to do projects. Other big picture things, most of the requirements seem to not apply to single family detached property owners.
Correct. My understanding is that there is an exception within the tree manual on single families.
Here's what, it's getting me there is that, you know, the bulk of the land in this city is made up of those SLR, MLR. That's the bulk of the land. Another huge tranche of land is actually our open space. And then the next largest tranche of land is
Our public right of ways.
Okay, so this, so this is really a set of things that is putting a lot of landscaping and tree requirements and costs into a very specific small section of of development. And I just, I, I want to just raise that concern. You know, we, we struggle with price a lot in the conversations about affordability, about, you know, why are apartments so expensive to rent? Why, why is it so hard to open a building, a, a business? And these things do add cost to that and, and make it complicated to do that. So now we have, it seems to me that now we have, when we move a lot of this stuff over to the purview of public works, we have sort of a new, Jared's team might have formerly done all of the title, the title 10 work primarily on a development project. But now they're going to have to have reviews both at community development for plan side conformance to the tree stuff. And also have to come over to public works and get a series of permits and approvals.
I can't speak directly to process, but my understanding in terms of development review is that public works is already being involved in terms of each racket. And so when
In terms of trees.
Yes, because they're the, they're the experts. And so in terms of process, they were, you know, whenever the application comes in, in terms of the reviews and who's assigned the review, there would be an assigned project manager, whoever from, whether it was city forester or someone from grounds, that would be assigned to that project to take a look at the plans and make their comments within each racket. And so I, I'm hoping that that alleviates your concern there, but I don't necessarily know that it'll be an extra step in divvying out that responsibility.
I mean, in terms of, in terms of helping people get through this process, it really would be, in my opinion, the better approach would be to have the development parcels, that's part that they own, that's part that's not part of the public way, be handled by the community development team. Stuff that's in the private, the public right of way zone, that would be a public works concerning zone, wouldn't be part of the private development. You know, street trees, for instance, yes, they're parcels, but the city has a right of way for utility and other things up to a certain distance off the street's pan. And that, that should just not be, I mean, that, I'm just talking big picture here. The way to really simplify this would be to separate the private development work from what is basically public right of way stuff. And not have that involved in private development.
To follow up on that, the landscape plan is a requirement that's not changing, right?
Correct.
Elements of the landscape plan are not, and that
That's for internal to the parcels.
The rest of residences is because they're already there. But if it's a new subdivision, that's when it would come into play. And I wonder if public works does review those subdivision plans in terms of landscape. I tend to agree that the planning would probably be a more appropriate place. Whoever does the landscape plan review.
So the city forester normally does review the landscape plans for of trees that are planted on private development. And I guess the other thing I wanted to add a little context on there is when we're talking about tree replacement and excluding single family unit residents, I believe we're, what we're trying to say is excluding existing single family residents, right? So if it's part of a new development, then it would, the tree manual would apply to it.
If I'm not mistaken, also the, the tear down and rebuild would still have to comply with, with the other sections of the code, which do have some landscaping requirements. They're very broad, they're pretty general. But then that would point back to the, the tree manual.
The city, I'm sorry, the city forester is within public works, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So the, the way it's been working currently is if it's a fairly small landscape plan, the community development team often takes that on. But if it's something pretty large and complex, some of the newer developments, we definitely reach out to, you know, our colleagues in public works. And that's been, you know, occurring for quite some time. You know, you're, you're right that we have shifted a number of engineering review, et cetera, towards the community development department. And trying to kind of coalesce around a group that's really easily able to walk around the corner and ask, you know, the, your colleague a question, et cetera. We found that that's been working really well and we've been working on permitting a few other things. But we, we do feel that the expertise in public works is really valuable. And we do operate and correspond with public works on a whole host of different things throughout the development process. So even though we've been kind of trying to bring in that team, we still have to reach out to public works for some utility items and a few other things. So we're very happy with the relationship and, and happy to, you know, for their assistance.
The other thing I wanted to add was I do believe that there's value in the tree manual, especially for the landscape architects that work on new developments. It'll be similar to when the LEDs are adopted and you can give that to the engineering firm and those are the standards that they follow. Similar with the tree manual, it'd be able to take the tree manual, give it to the landscape architect, and they'll be able to follow those standards. So I think it is an advantage for, at least for some of the larger developments.
I'm wondering if there's a way to, to really start, what, I agree that having a one document source is valuable and good. We have three documents really to have to comply with in this current setup. I wonder if there's a way to, in a, in the sense that there's no LEDs in the ULUC, there's no LEDs in the The LEDs is really a truly standalone document that's used as a reference for engineering design. If we're going to do this, can we, could we take that approach for trees? That this tree manual is like the LEDs, that truly, every, all the references that are internal to the ULUC and title eight, just say, see the tree manual. Because I just, just looking at it myself, the tree manual, it's 53 pages, it's fairly complicated. And then when you're telling me that I've got to also check 10 dash one dash three six, as well as sections eight, you know, that adds cost. You almost need a professional for even, let's say you're building a three unit property. This is triggered because only single unit detached. Now, I'm going to say, I think we should change the language so it triggers at the multi-unit level. Five and above. That, you know, we talked about the parking minimums, the council voted on the compliance with the state for the parking minimums to, really, it was going to be single family only, but they said up to four. Because that's where you start triggering the larger. I, I think we should be doing the same thing. It shouldn't say in this, in this code, it shouldn't say single family detached. It should trigger at the multi-unit, multi-family level. So that when we do have duplexes and triplexes, like for instance, in this, you're allowed to cut a tree down on your property without a permit if you're a single family homeowner. But if you lived in a duplex, you have to go to the city and get a permit. And that just seems like another sort of burden on a small, a missing middle type of house homeowner. And yet it's the same basic parcel, they're on the same zone district. So that would be my advice or my suggestion is to kind of not just limit it to single family. The structure of the building, but kind of the typology of the property. And that would be MFR and above.
I, I agree. I, I noticed that too. And I thought that that was kind of odd that we weren't just looking at like, what are the, what are the lots, right? You know, and what are the, the lot designations that we have and applying it that way? Because, yeah, it doesn't make sense. We have spaces in Littleton where we've got, you know, duplexes that exist next to single family homes. And the idea that one person can cut down a tree and their neighbor can't without getting a permit. There's, there, there's also something that I, I see, I guess, a little bit with older homes. And I don't know how, I don't know, like, if, if we make this so that it applies only to like the MFR and, and aboves, and I think maybe it's a moot point, but we have, I have, I have trees in particular that are very close to my house. And from a fire break perspective, they need to come down, right? And I don't know if we're, i- if, you know, again, it, it may be, it may be a moot point if we wind up just applying this to, to like MFR or new developments or, you know, or, or the other question is if, if it does apply to, to scrapes and rebuilds, right? Does a tree that's too close from a, from a fire break perspective, trigger this, right? Or can you say, unfortunately, this tree was too close to the house and should have been cut down anyway per fire regulations? And, and kind of not, not have to pay the, you know, $250 per inch because of that.
But I, I think the way the code is written down, the way it's proposed is that's a part of property, right? It's a single family zone, the property, it's yours to deal with, right? You, the city can't tell you to take it down or protect even protect it. I'm not sure if that clarifies your question.
Well, partially, but then, I mean, I, I think it, on some level, there are older, there are older properties maybe that are within this MFR, right? And if they wind into a, a situation where they've got trees that are within that fire break of their, of the home, right? Are they allowed to take down that tree from a safety perspective? Like, does that, does that qualify? I see there's things about public right of way, you know, pedestrian access, vehicular access. I don't see things about
Fire safety.
Fire safety.
So that would be under the purview of eight four, which is already currently within public works's area. Within the current language of eight four, and it is in, I believe, eight four two inspections. The city can, has the ability to inspect any tree or tree part growing upon property, whether it's public or private for disease, for infestation. I know that when Reed wrote the repeal, reenact, he also added structural deficiency. And so the city does have the ability, if we see something like in terms of maybe, you know, our fire is going by and they're like, hey, that's a little bit too close. Maybe that's something that needs to be taken down. We have the ability to contact the property owner and say, we, you know, may we get onto your property and inspect this tree? We believe that there is an issue with it. Maybe it has a disease, maybe there's some structural deficiency. And we can request that they, you know, remove that and eradicate it or otherwise control that condition, however it needs to be controlled. So that is already currently within our section eight four. But that is within public works and not necessarily within our ULUC provisions, if I'm not mistaken.
Does the property owner go, have the right to say, this is within my 15 foot, you know, or the, the tree is within, what is it, five feet? I've got branches within five feet of my home or five feet of my structure.
So the new written, the new repeal, reenact, so the care and maintenance of trees and other plant material on your private property has always been that private property owner's responsibility, right? And that's nothing, that's nothing new. In terms of, and it's written, I guess, I don't want to say in the negative, but it is their responsibility currently and within the repeal, reenact to make sure that the trees on their property are not hazardous. So they have to protect our public right of way in terms of projections. They have to provide the proper clearance, they have to provide the proper site distance, take care of any encroachments. I mean, anything that could potentially endanger, and that's broad language that's used within our repeal, reenact, endanger the safe of public use of the right of way for pedestrian or vehicular access. And it's something that we can add, that if it's a potential hazard to the public in general, that they have the ability to do that. In terms of tree removal, and I'm sorry, I didn't intend on discussing eight four, so I'm reading it as I go.
That's in, not in our packet, though.
It's not in. Let's see, and it's not finalized. So that is a specific exception that is being written into the repeal, reenact. So for the trees on public property, if you need a permit, you have to go and apply for a permit. But the exception would be tree removal restrictions don't apply to activities for a single family residence. And then they also do not apply to any utilities in the area that maybe that are regulated by the PUC.
Do you have any idea how many permits have been obtained from these smaller lots to actually cut down trees?
No, you would have to ask staff.
Does, does anyone have any idea how many of that would, I'm guessing it's pretty low. Because they're just going to do it anyway. That's, that's, that's the point, I think, to the, so I, I think
Have a regulatory structure, but no real team to it.
Yeah, I, I don't see any, I, I tend to, unless you get to like a certain unit level, it doesn't matter. Because I, I didn't even, I didn't even realize there were probably trees that I planted on my, on my property that I probably should have pulled a permit for. Because it, it might potentially catch the right of way at some point. Because the right of way actually goes into my property ways.
I had, I had a tree that was, I considered hazardous. It was a very large dying cottonwood with dead branches. You know how they just die and they're just massive and chunks fall right over the power line to our house? And I, I actually filed a request for a city inspection to come out and evaluate it, but it doesn't happen. I mean, I just don't think there's the staff capacity to actually enforce. It may be in our code, but there's a lot of
Yeah, and, and that's why
Theoretically, a lot of this is just like on paper.
Yeah, I, I think what, just to go back, right? Like, I mean, we have, we have at this point in our city, basically, non-conforming duplexes, right? Areas that are duplexes or triplexes or whatever, that are older homes that are within what's now single family zoned, right? So I would like the language to be explicit to say that, you know, you know, small lot residential, medium lot residential, large lot residential, acreage residential, then would not be what applies. Or conversely, applies to, you know, MFR, right? Rather than saying single family homes in that, in the text.
Could you point out to us where, I can't find that definition.
Um, well, I saw that, that part was in section eight, which I know we didn't have.
There's a couple of references to single family.
Eight, four, five, A. It says, it shall be unlawful for any person to on public or private property within the city excluding lots which contain single family residences to remove a tree whose trunk is greater than four inches in diameter.
I have another question. Well, I think Aaron's point is a very good one. I want to second that. I think the, I, I have a whole philosophical issue with charging people costs for cutting down trees. And I'm just going to lay this, this out. I mean, I, I think we should have that visited very carefully with our council and with the elected officials that they know and understand what this is. That's to disincentivize the removal of trees. But it can add substantial costs as we see, even in that small calculation, it can be thousands of dollars. It can rapidly add $250 an inch. A 10 inch tree is $2,500. And when you have a development on a project that has 30 trees and you're removing 20 of them, that's $100,000. You know, these are not inconsequential numbers. And when we, as a, as a city and as a region, we're faced with extremely expensive costs for building and developing anything. And that just adds another hurdle. And I wonder, when we see the rapid growth around us, you know, when we make it difficult and costly to build, to do a development here in Littleton, what happens is people look at, oh, I could try and build this over here, but JFCO doesn't have any of these rules of pricing for removing trees. I'm going to just go find a parcel over there and just put it over there. And so we keep incentivizing people to not do work here by penalizing. I would prefer, I think, I don't know, this is late, this is the first time I've really gotten into the weeds of it here. But it would be better in terms of if we wanted to get to trees in our city, to incentivize the abundant use of them through, through putting them in. Like, if you put in X, say we have a baseline number of trees. If you go beyond that, you might get faster plan review, you might get lower impact fees assessed. That incentivizing creating trees You might get faster plan review, you might get lower impact fees assessed, that incentivizing creating trees. Um, that doesn't penal, it doesn't involve taking out calipers and measuring and finding calculations for costs. That, that to me would be a better approach.
You could do it the opposite way as well, where you incent, where you speed things up if they're gonna keep the old trees too. Then there's, there's, there's both, both ends and you can credit it, um.
I just can't support that and potentially could on. Residential, but commercial developments where there are very mature trees. I mean, we just had this example happen. And, you know, we're. Where these beautiful, huge, irreplaceable trees were all cut down, and you cannot put a price on that. You know, it, it, I just can't see just blanketly saying you can just cut down trees. And, and maybe so in terms of affordable housing.
We're saying that you, you have a, a level of trees that are expected in the site plan process, and you have to meet that.
So is that what we're looking at here on this, on the slide as far as the, the calculation, the canopy loss rate fee? The DSH, what is that? Uh, is that like a?
I believe it stands for diameter, it's standard height.
Okay, so if I cut down a ten inch tree, but I plant ten one inch trees. Do I come out at zero or am I still getting fined?
I think that's how that, I mean, you subtract the diameter of the trees that you're planting, so. You, if you replaced it.
Right.
I think that would break even.
Yeah, the fee and move is only if it's impractical to replant trees on the property. For whatever reason, that's the only way they would pay the fee and move fee. So if they plant the amount and I don't, if it's, you know, one to one as far as. DBH or DSH, sorry, um, then there will be no fee. If you can hit that, whatever you took out, you can replant.
Um, the, yeah, the, the other thing too is your, the canopy loss rate is it says two fifty inch for shade trees. Does that, do we, do we look at evergreens at all? Is there any kind of evergreen?
I haven't noticed, I don't know why it says shade. I mean, I would think that'd be all trees.
Okay, I guess I was just thinking those, that may, that would reflect like a deciduous tree rather than a, a pine tree. You know, often crawl under pine trees, I guess, cause don't have the clearance, you know? Um.
That depends on the pine tree.
Yeah, fair enough, um.
Commercial and neighborhood, commercial and CMU parcels, I mean, I think, I, I think of, what are the great places? Commercial places, when I think of great places, I like to go in Littleton. If you think about our downtown Main Street, for instance, none of those buildings could possibly comply with these street regulations. You can't have fifteen or twenty percent tree canopy cover on anything on Main Street. They almost all have. So basically, we're basically, the tree laws, the tree rules we have here preclude us from ever having a Main Street kind of development. And I think of newer developments like Littleton Beer Company. We're talking about redeveloping Littleton Boulevard, and. There's a table in here that has a new percentage for the canopies and everything was bumped up ten percent. And I think of a great new business on Littleton Boulevard, it's a, these are commercial spaces, they're not. What I'm trying to say is that I think commercial particularly in C, CMU are really not places for forests or trees. They're just like Main Street, it's nice to have trees in the public right of way, but demanding them. Within the business, within the commercial enterprise that's being put in there is a kind of odd thing, it's a kind of. If, if, one, it means we'll never get another Main Street type of place. Two, places that are moving in that direction, like Littleton Brew Company, if you think about Littleton Brewing Company. Big building, it's got a front patio with sand, it's got a little wall, there's maybe eight trees along the front edge. It's gotta have a tree canopy coverage of like six percent. I mean, I don't know how it passed muster by these things, but if you, we want great places like that, commercial. I'm not saying we shouldn't have tons of trees in the city, and I think our, our greatest tree canopy has gotta be our, our residential areas. And the next biggest is our parks, but when we're expecting businesses to put in, what's like twenty, thirty percent in seat? Twenty percent of the coverage has to be trees, that's gonna make it, we, we want. We want our businesses to be close to the street in this kind of. Promenade for walkable spaces, that means the trees are gonna have to be behind the building. So what, what great value is there in that? I think I have to respectfully disagree with you there. I, I think, um, when I think of the tree canopy coverage of a commercial property along the Main Street. Like Littleton Boulevard or Main Street, it's the street, it's the sidewalk, it's the canopy over the sidewalk that provides the shade that we lost on Main Street, right? And even at Littleton Brewing Company, those trees might be small now, but that calculation is based on a mature size. So at some point, they should cover fifteen or twenty percent of the sidewalk correctly. And, and I don't think they should, I agree they should not be hidden behind the building and wasting space. I said that the, 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 the right away is like, the public right of way really is like a public concern. And that it's, it's on us, really, that we should be shaping our. Tree expectations of the public realm based on our costs, the social, socialized costs of the city, not really onto the developer. Like that, they're trying to make a business or build a housing or whatever, and, and I, I do wanna have trees. I think trees are essential. I'm not trying to say they're not. I'm just saying that when we have, and let's get to that table, cause I thought some of the numbers there had been bumped up and I, I wondered why. Like, where did those, it's a little bit like parking minimums, like where did these numbers come from? What, what's the, what did we see that caused these new numbers to be created? Like, where did they originate? And then how do they impact it? It's one of the, one of the zones, it's like thirty percent. Thirty percent, and this is a commercial. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think the way Littleton does it and just about every other city I've worked with is you, the, the, the. Adjacent property owner basically owns everything to the back of curb, right? So even though the, those trees are in the right of way. It's the develop, the cost of development includes the cost of planting and irrigating those trees so that they get to their mature size, so. And that's counted in the canopy calculation, so it doesn't even necessarily be, have to be on their property to meet that, so. Uh, and that's where the public is, right? They're in the right of way, they're on the sidewalk, that's where they benefit in those. I mean, I actually think a lot of people will put in trees for different reasons, for their own purposes and value, whether it's patio space in front of their restaurant. Could be planters, big planners, I mean, the, the question I always have, and, and I don't know if everybody shares this, is that. The leaner our code is, the simpler it is to read and grasp, the better the outcomes are. If I think of the great places in Littleton, all, including our neighborhoods, all of them were developed without any of this stuff. And we have been incredibly rich, when you get up to the air and look at this from above, or even if you're high on a ridge and you look across the city, we have a lot of trees. Compared to what was here a hundred and ten years ago, um, and that was all achieved without any great fifty-three page document demanding trees and harbors. Not to say that this is not of value, but I think we have to really bring a lot of. Value to this equation, and we need to really make sure we're doing what we wanna do. In a way that, that gets it done, and I would love to see this as a twelve page tree manual, honestly. I know that's crazy, but fifty-three pages, it seems like a lot.
Well, I think, yeah, there was something too on, on one of the documents where I, I think it expressly referred to, like the CSU tree list. Right, um, and I can't remember where I saw that now, but like, I, I think that, yeah, to, to that, to that point as far as, you know, keeping our. Code lean, right, is to say, you know, hey, refer to CSU's front range tree list, right? Because, you know, if, if you, if, if we need to do that, right, that keeps, that keeps some of what we, we're putting. In our code and that we would have to change and update to reflect, you know, species of trees and whatnot, a little bit more dynamic, right? Um, I think, you know, the, the, I feel like a lot of the, a lot of where this is really applicable. Or wha- where we, where we actually need this is because of things like Costco, right? Where, where it's like, you know, we don't want just acres of asphalt, you know? And, uh, you know, after they've cut down all these trees and no, no, you know, no, no shade or no, nothing anywhere except just. Acres of pavement, right? But, um. I mean, you're still gonna have acres of pavement, obviously, you're, yeah, you, you have to, right, so it's, so it's like. Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, so, so, yeah, it's, I, I agree that, you know, we've gotta, we, we gotta kind of tread carefully here because it's like, if it's. If you're talking about places like downtown Littleton or, or, you know, yeah, whatever they're gonna do with like Geneva Village or, you know, or, yeah, Littleton. Boulevard or whatever, um, you know, if you want. Walkable, people friendly spaces, yeah, you can only turn over so much of that. As opposed to, you know, when you've got acres of parking lot, it's easy to pop in a couple of islands with, with trees, um. I, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a better way to, to kind of make this lean on the larger, on these larger developments with massive parking lots. And, and be a little bit more flexible with small businesses that, you know, may not have the, you know. Hundred thousand dollars for, for a tree fee.
Yeah, and I, I think there's kind of two different conversations there, you know, one is the, the tree mitigation fee and right sizing that, you know, do we feel that this is. Is the appropriate, I know we've got some research that indicates that this is, you know, per standard practice. Uh, our current code is, is definitely not standard practice of, of not mitigating anything until it's twelve inches or larger. That's, you know, that's, that's definitely not something that, that we would see throughout the region. Uh, two, though, I, I did wanna touch on the, um, canopy coverage and, you know, I, I do agree that right sizing, it's important, absolutely. Um, we do utilize canopy coverage in this code though, uh, to a greater extent to, to get. Quality landscaping than in some other codes I've worked with. Some other codes really talk about you must have a landscape island every twelve spaces, every fifteen spaces. Our code's really not quite that prescriptive. It says you need to have this much, uh, canopy coverage. And that really pushes people into how many islands they put in, where they're located, to try to meet those coverage items. Um, for us, it's also, uh, you know, a means in which to. Work towards the urban heat island. I know that our urban forest, we've seen some, um, some studies in the past. That has indicated that our urban forest has been somewhat diminished and is somewhat under threat. There's no doubt that it's far more robust than it was a hundred years ago and it was far more, absolutely. Um, but for those, those other goals that, uh, that planning typically strives to achieve. Um, we do feel that, that having, uh, a robust landscaping. Portfolio in our code or in the tree manual is important. Uh, I think lastly, you know, I, I completely agree with the intent that, you know, downtown is this. Uh, phenomenal dense place, right? Um, I would though say that there are a number of, uh, and this isn't just in Littleton, this is nationwide, right? Where there were some gaps in code language, et cetera, that really got us to points in development. That a lot of people don't really care for, with sea of pavement, et cetera. That we've been trying to move away from for the past, you know, thirty, probably forty years, right? And so, um, I think, you know, in, in some cases, F code's potentially gone, you know, uh, pretty far, potentially. And like I said, I think there's some rightsizing to be done there. I do hesitate to throw it all out though. Because I do think that that provides that potential to go to a spot, and especially in these more suburban character areas. Where it's not as inviting to the public anymore.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, I, I don't know that I think that, I don't know that I think I like the idea of throwing it all out by any means, I just. There's part of me that wonders if there's maybe something of a, a, a sliding scale that, that goes in here, right? Like if you're doing a development of, like we said, for the, the sign plan, if it's what, you know, like six acres or above, right? Then this applies, right, versus if it's, you know, one acre or less, then maybe this applies, right? Or, or there's, you know, a waiver process associated with maybe some of these smaller developments versus like. You know, Shea Homes rolling in with, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars to, you know, to just scrape and redo. Well, they can, they can suck it up and they can pay and they can plant, right, you know, as opposed to. Uh, you know, a small business owner or, you know, local developer who's looking to, you know. Maybe renovate, uh, you know, a smaller property right near, you know, near downtown. Like, is there, you know, is, is that something that we could consider in terms of where this applies in terms of scale?
I can, I can say that, that's one discussion that has not come up, it's not something that came up with our consultant or consultant's report. In terms of kind of summarizing what I've heard, um, whether it would be, you know. Whether there would be parameters set on MFR above, or it triggers at a certain number of units for multifamily, or, you know, maybe lot size or anything like that. Um, it's not something, at least not in my discussions with Public Works or Planning, um, something that has come up in terms of placing those parameters. Um, as to the applicability of the tree manual, um. If that is something that, uh, the commissioners would like to see, it's a larger discussion. Um, it's something that I don't necessarily know that it would happen in the next few weeks, um. Uh, it, as I mentioned, it would, we have not contemplated it at all. Um, and I think we would have to take a deeper dive into what implications setting those parameters on the tree manual would have. Um, and I don't wanna speak for Public Works, um, or Planning, um, I just, you know. In terms of what I see in, in my resources and what I see coming from them and their resources, I'm not sure. It would be, it would be a larger discussion for us to have in thinking about those.
Sorry, I, I was thinking about downtown, um, and the fact that I believe we cut down, was it seventy trees downtown? Um, so I think in, in the bigger picture, just think about downtown and that we lost, in them four blocks, we lost seventy trees, right? Due to those trees being in poor health, right? And so we've lost tree canopy throughout the city because of, as obviously the trees are getting older. And I do think that commercial properties can replace trees, especially even like downtown. Um, I know when I walked down there, I, I miss that shade. I think, uh, the Denver Beer Company, I think the trees that we planted there are gonna provide future shade. So I think there's kind of a balance that we need to think about when, you know, the commercial properties are developing.
No, I agree.
One of the other things with this is there's always going to be the element of. I, as a person, as a property owner of a single family home, I can't plant a giant tree. That wants to grow into the, the power lines that are right above me, they're trying to avoid things like, there's always gonna be elements of it that are gonna be. Applicable to the, applicable to the neighborhood, and, and so. I don't know if we need to parse those two, two things out as far as what's applicable to what, cause I mean, it's, it's always a, like, I shouldn't be planting. Something that's gonna grow six foot high, five, six foot high and eight feet wide next to a stop sign. I shouldn't be doing that. Um, there's, and it shouldn't be permitted, um.
One thing about the tree manual though, and we do state this specifically, is that property owners or contractors planting on private property. The tree manual is just a guideline, it's best practices for them to utilize, um, and just, you know, to, they're encouraged to follow those specifications. And I'm sure if something comes up, you know, that's something that we're gonna be like, here's the tree manual, this is, there are reasons in here why we're recommending what we're recommending, um.
But there's also regulations that make me pull a permit if I'm within a certain distance of a, of a right of way, correct?
Yes, definitely.
You have to pull a permit if it's in the right of way, or if there's potential it's gonna fall out of the right way, right?
Flawing to it, okay.
Um, it might be, uh, I, there's been a lot of discussion on the fee, um, I mean, I've been here about two years now, and I believe only one project. Has actually incurred the tree fee. We do see a lot of development actually wanting to increase their own tree canopy. It, it is, it's an enhancement not only for the public but for the development as well. Um, and that this fee is really intended for what cannot be recaptured in the future. Um, and it goes into our tree fund, um, and which is intended, um, there's a urban heat island map. Um, and a tree equity study that's been done by the city, and this fund is intended to bolster that so that we can plant trees. Where our most vulnerable populations are, um, our biggest climate threat in Littleton is going to be urban heat. And trees are absolutely crucial for mitigating that into the future, so as we're developing, we also need to think about. Some of these impacts that have these downstream costs into the future, um, and, but again, I would like to kind of center that. We very rarely are leveraging these fee and moves, um, smaller developments are typically providing more trees than if they have to cut down unhealthy or even healthy tree.
So I, I think that's a good point, so the, the, the money is intended to go into the tree equity fund. And we do have a certain section of the city that, um, does not have as much, uh, canopy as some of the, uh, wealthier parts of the city and. Um, part of our urban forestry, um, plan was to increase the, the capacity or the canopy in those, uh. I guess disadvantaged communities, um, using that fee, so.
I wanna make it clear that, 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 those are worthwhile goals, and I think maintaining this canopy, it's a question of where we source that money, and are we penalizing? It's a question of where we source that money, and are we penalizing people who are trying to build a business, open a brewing company, you wanna do that? Or is that a social concern that our our government and our council should be funding as a social concern? And I think that's the way to do it, rather than put the burden on people who are trying to open a brewing company or something like that. Like, why are they the ones responsible for fixing our poor canopy? Or or, so, there's that, that it's it's not a question that we, do you need to address equity issues in trees? Or that we should foster a tree canopy in our open space? If that's, I share that. It's really a question of the locus of the pain. And when we're trying to both encourage development and economic, lower the cost for people who are trying to do things that make this a vibrant city, uh, it's really a question of the locus of that, and I.
That's an interesting point that you can make. You know, I I think the history, uh, uh, the the trend has been to load the cost of those types of improvements, that new development as opposed to people that are already there, right? So, you know, spending, paying taxpayer money to improve a a new development lot. So, yes, there is a shift in cost to somebody who wants to do something like Littleton Brewery. That's unfortunate, but that's the trade off, I guess, right?
Yeah, and the other part is we shift many, many costs. I mean, when you, when you're building a development, all those costs are shifted. And whether it be, we want wider sidewalks, we want more, um, egress, egress lanes, we want traffic lights, we want, stop signs, we want bicycle lanes, we want. I mean, if you wanna get down to the locus of it, it's like you could just cut all the, all that stuff out and say, you know, just go for it, do what you want. I mean, it's kind of.
So we have, but what the consequence, the consequences are that we have large sections that sort of Broadway, and Littleton Road back to Moore's Run Development. We've got low and back. A single successful business, like Littleton Brewing Company, you know, they they will produce several million dollars a year for the rest of eternity. Uh, of 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 affording the city the resources, potentially to rebuild sidewalks, to widen, do those things. And when we, when we have a a very disincentivizing structure for for new people to come in and put in this long-term generation of capital for the city, and we penalize, we end up with a kind of, I think we end up with a lot of places that are kind of not, people go elsewhere where there's, there's less costs to do development. And so, so instead of really building up a a s- a long-term sustainable revenue source for us, we actually have people opening things up and whether it's new development. I I think that one of the important ideas that we've talked about today is scale. Is that, is it, that possibly this, someone putting in a multi, a five or seven-unit multifamily building on a small half-acre parcel. This current code is, well, they have to put thirty percent tree cover on that. And it may be that it's not even possible to fit on their little quarter acre.
Canopy, yeah.
Their canopy. Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, like, that maybe the trigger should be a size thing, if if nothing else. Because, you know, we're, we're putting, uh, little things, it can be difficult to make these work. And we're not gonna, we're not talking about a lot of trees, a lot of canopy, a lot of change on something like a quarter acre. A lot of the businesses we see are on very small things. Um, and so, I would love to see this trigger on, certainly, a s- a big subdivision, certainly a Costco-sized place. Though I will say that I think to Jared's point, trees and parking lots are of no val- they're very limited value to me as canopy. They will qualify for the coverages, you know, they'll get their, it would be a CMU and this new table's twenty percent coverage. You could, you have a parking lot and you put a bunch of islands and tree on it, you'll have twenty percent canopy in no time.
That might actually speak to bolster his point then, that we don't regulate it every twelve slots. That it's like they get to choose where they're putting their stuff, and maybe it's a little bit better that way. At least they're getting to pick where they're putting it.
I mean, I think there's so many ways that our focus really is on the places that people are, the the public right of way. I I think trees in the middle of parking lots, whether it's the, the new parking lots that are putting on, or the affordable housing, those are not, they meet the requirements of the code. They will, they will meet the tree manual's demands for X amount of canopy and X amount of trees and can-. But they're not of great concern or value to to citizens or the people moving around. They're like sitting there over empty asphalt most of the day.
It's just, part, part of it too, though, is, you know, I mean, we look at the life cycle of a Costco, right? Or the life cycle of a Walmart, or the life cycle of the big box stores. A lot of them are kinda short, right? So those are the, you know, I mean, as opposed to, you know, even like re- residential areas where, you know, you're gonna plant these, you know, re- new residential subdivision like we've got at, uh, you know, Santa Fan Mineral, right? You know, those trees are either gonna be there for the long term. So, I I think it's still important to say, like, well, you don't get, even, you know, even if it is just a parking lot, you don't just get a free pass, right, in terms of, you know, scraping and rebuild, or, you know, scraping, you know, existing or knocking down existing trees and and not replanting anything. Um, you know, I think long-term, long-term planting of trees, yeah, you're absolutely right. You know, where it's along sidewalks or in parks, is gonna be a better investment than it is in a parking lot. But, you know, at the same time, obviously, we don't wanna just give Costco a free pass to say, nah, you don't need to, you don't need to restore any of those trees you cut down, right? So, whether there's some rule, yeah, there's some rule as far as, you know, what you need to pay or what you need to plant, you know, especially for those larger-scale developments.
Yeah, but there's a lot of evidence that trees in a parking lot do cool the environment. They do provide protection. You know, there's.
And I think that people who are building those things are gonna put them in.
And aesthetically, it's way more attractive than looking at this glaring heat island parking lot with no green whatsoever.
Here's a nut, so a hypothetical example that just to underline that point. Uh, South Suburban Gulf, of course, if you've ever been up there, that parking lot is just a sea of asphalt, right? There's no tree, uh, any trees, no islands, no nothing. Well, um, they wanna expand that parking lot cause it constantly overflows and it's dangerous in the intersections cause cars are parked almost down to Dry Creek Road down there, Colorado. Um, they want, in order to add some parking to that lot, they would have to bring the whole thing up to the City of Centennial's code, which requires islands and trees and irrigation, and it's an exorbitant cost, so they're not gonna do anything. So.
So they won't build this big expansion of parking lot?
That type of thing where, um.
We could have an all-night conversation about the way, if we, asphalt parking lots are a huge negative in terms of island effect. In general, no matter how many trees are are we're gonna require, we'll never get enough trees to really mitigate.
Incredible amount of reflective negative heat.
So, the solution is to make parking garages and underground parking and enclosed internal parking and get away from that. And I'm glad they're not gonna expand that parking lot. And that's, that's just my personal opinion.
Too, for development. I mean, those costs are, can be tremendous.
Oh, yeah. Parking garages are tremendously expensive, but it is a better land use in a way, you know, as opposed to.
We talk all night about.
So, you know, whatever. Anyway, back to the trees.
Like to make, um, part of the reason that we need private development to help us with this is we have nine thousand acres in the city of Littleton. The city itself maintains eighty acres. So, we can't get to canopy goals with just the number of acres that we maintain. So, we need private development to help us. We need South Suburban to help us. Um, you know, part of the new operating agreement with South Suburban, I think we'll really dive into what their forestry management plan is. Um, the urban forestry, uh, report that's on our website really kind of dives in a little bit deeper to that. Um, the last ten years' population has gone up in Littleton ten percent, and the tree canopy has declined by five percent. So, um, you know, those are two big things. Um, you know, Emerald Ashmore is here, um, twenty-five percent of our canopy in the city of Littleton is Emerald, it is, um, ash trees. Um, that fee and loo, uh, money, uh, is going straight to having our citizens, um, treat their ash trees. So, um, you know, we're also trying different things to help preserve the canopy. Um, we're treating about a hundred and fifty of the, um, biggest ash trees we have in the city on city property. So, uh, we can't do this alone. Um, and then also, if you look in the tree manual, um, two point three, table eight, um, there is a tree preservation credit. So, um, developers are, you know, in, uh, incentivized to save and those larger trees. So, um, just a couple.
How does that table look compared to, are are surrounding jurisdictions? I I just, I don't know that the answer, I just, is it on par? Is it, is it stronger? I- is it, what, would, do we, do we know?
I I don't know the answer to that, but I'm happy to do some research and.
I I can answer it, uh, from Denver, cause I worked for Denver for seven years. Their city forestry is very strict on tree protection, uh, even for, within agencies. I worked for Denver Parks, which I just recently retired from. But, um, they, it, the city forester's office required parks to adhere to the same type of requirements as any developer that was coming in, in terms of tree.
I just didn't know far, cause it's like, it's based off the tree size, so six to twelve inches, you get three shade trees or four ornamental tree credit, basically. And the the bigger the tree gets, the more credit you get. Um, I just wanna make sure that it's at least on par with what the heck's around us, so.
And I would assume it is. This, uh, um, manual was developed by Davy, uh, Resource Group, which is a nationally known, um, tree company. So, um, I would assume it is, but I'm happy to, happy to look into it a little bit further.
Yeah, I mean, you can, that'd be, that'd be. I'd love to know the answer to that question. Um, just a couple other things. Is this, the tree document, is it going to be treated like a ULUC update? Like, how does this document get updated since we're slashing so much stuff out of our code and putting it into this document? At least from ten one, three, ten one, three. Um, how, what's the process for updating this document? Is it the same as a ULUC update? Is it all internal? How, how does this document get updated? Because it's, it comes down to, like, how, who sees these updates, how they get updated, what is going on with them?
So, the way that it's currently written into eight four, that's where the formal adoption of the tree manual will be. Um, so it does not need to go to council every single time. Um, the director has the authority and the discretion to amend as necessary to best accomplish whatever our public purposes are. And I already mentioned the plan name, and I can't remember it right now.
Yeah.
Um, but if there's something substantive, for example, I, in my opinion, substantive would be setting parameters in terms of scaling. Um, that's something that, you know, I believe that if, um, scaling is requested, scaling is recommended, and it's something that maybe we can't get to in the next two to three weeks, that maybe we touch base in three months. That's something that, you know, I would request, um, our director to go back to city council and say, these are some additional parameters, which actually kicks out a lot of, um, the applicability of it, um, that I would, you know, I would request that he go to council, um, for that update. But it is currently written that the director, and whenever we have a city forester, who would be de- the designated, um, individual would be authorized to amend it.
I might like to see something a little bit more concrete than that, as far as, uh, you know, when and who is going to see these updates. Um, because as it stands right now, if you leave it in the code, this is basically, it has to go through the public process. That's taking a lot of transparency away, and it.
The public purposes that, um, the director is, so there is, there is a tie to the ULUC and those public purposes are written within ten one, three point six A. Um, I think there is one red line that was included, um, within the packet.
It seems, um, with, with this tree manual as well that we're mixing policy or procedures with policy. And a lot of this tree manual really isn't policy, it is, it's recommendations. I mean, some of it is, some of it's more like rules, but it's a real mixed bag. So I think it does get confusing in terms of, you know, we've got the new language is policy, right? And then this, there are so many parts of it saying, you don't really have to do this, but this is what it means.
The tree manual, um, in all forms and parts. So if there's any type of conflict, any provision within the ULUC, any provision in eight four or any of the provision within the code or charter would supersede. So, the tree manual supplements what is currently in the, or what will be amended within the code. And that's how, um, the authority section of the repealed reenactment of eight four will be written.
Can we, um, kind of come around to, do we wanna make a recommendation then as a commission around, uh, the scaling issue? Whether it's based on tree requirements, based on the property size, or scaling based on a property type like, uh, housing up to a certain number of units or s- or under a certain number of units wouldn't be required to comply, whereas other sized developments would. I mean, would it be better served on a unit basis or the type?
I, I think it would be wise to just tie it to, like, how you would, how you do, for, when does affordable housing units kick in? That's probably the same level it should, should be. It seems like, it seems like a level that would make sense, which is what, five units?
That's correct.
So, that, that, that seems like a, like a rational cutoff to me. I don't know if anybody has that, or if we just do it by zone, district, or.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking that, that parcel size is a better way, because we, we, cause we have, if we're just doing it on some, some kind of units, we're still making a small, like a small business owner that's building like a small ice cream store. It's triggered for them because they're just happened to be on an NC parcel. It might be a tiny NC parcel, but they're on an NC parcel. So now they've gotta have twenty, thirty percent tree coverage, and it might have been, might be very difficult to do it. It should be, I think, I would think it would be better to just trigger it based on, just like we did with MDPs. Like, it's based on a certain scale, and at a certain scale, then you, you get involved in the city's tree.
So what would that be?
Or example, I think that's a question that really has to be sort of looked at in real-world circumstances.
What is that size?
What gets redeveloped and what, you know, what do we see? Like, obviously, you know, there's just, uh, uh, there's not a lot of, you know, Costco slash River Park developments. You know, I mean, there's a few here and there, but like, you know, left in the city. So, I don't know that you wanna go up to that scale before it kicks in. Obviously, it would have to be something much smaller, but like, yeah, I mean.
Clarification, are we talking, so in terms of scaling, is this commission recommending staff to take a look at scaling for just when the fee kicks in, the fee and loo? Or scaling for when applicability of the tree manual as a whole kicks in? Cause I think that is a, that's a different discussion. Um.
I think, I I would say, I would say tree manual as a whole.
Okay.
Right, um, I would still exempt, you know, I think I'd probably still exempt small-scale residential.
I'll say this about s- using a s- trigger for scale. It means that staff is not getting all tied up in permitting and looking at details on very small projects. I mean, you really wanna put staff time on where it matters? And it's why we trigger project reviews on a bigger parcel. Like, it it possibly could save, hit several birds with one stone, so to speak. So, not legit, but, um, I, I, I don't know what that level is. And I, I, I would like to see, I don't know how, Andrea, you, you mentioned that there, or maybe it's a tossy, that there's a public review of this, but I haven't seen any effort to get public comment on it. May, it is maybe mentioned in the LEDs comment system, but that's not the same as actually making an attempt to get some public input on.
It's just gonna have to go through that process, correct?
It's going to council, uh.
It's not gonna have time, correct?
Nineteen, but I don't believe it.
How do we get around getting no public comment on a bunch of red lines and stuff like that? I, I would like to, I know the answer to that question, too. If, if, if there's not going to be a public comment session.
Yeah, then there's a public hearing.
A public hearing, yeah, but I mean, there's, there's typically like a, a time when, when people can, can, can submit the, the online, um, uh, comments and the like.
We don't generally do that with any other provisions of the code. Um, so for example, if we, we revise title three sixteen, um, we don't put it out for public comment. Generally, it just is packageded, and then it goes for first reading, second reading.
I, I feel like we do this every year. We do a ULUC update.
That's different.
This is like a LEDs, is it not like a?
It's a plan, it's a little.
It's a, it's a guidance document, and engineering design standards is one guidance document, and we have that under public review. And it's been a multi-month process, and I think that's a valuable thing to do. This isn't important. It's fifty-three pages. It's not as big as the LEDs. It's two hundred and thirty pages.
I believe it's tied to the, I cannot remember the name of the plan that we discussed in study session a few years ago, the urban, uh, right? Forestry Management Plan. I mean, if that's a recommendation that this, the commission is, um.
I, I think, all I'm gonna say is, this, this feels like a ULUC update that we should have that process with, particularly considering how many people are probably already angry about what has gone on at Costco. It's probably a good idea from just a PR standpoint. It's probably a good idea from just a PR standpoint to, to let people have comments at this. That's, that's just my, that's just my opinion.
But why don't we go around, and, well, first of all, why don't we hear from Public Works about the suggestion or potential recommendation that you don't, that we change that scale to a larger property size in terms of workload for you? I mean, trying to monitor a small parcel around, you know, the tree canopy, and does that make sense?
Yeah, you have, yeah. I can, I can tell you just a little bit about the process that we currently utilize and, and what, how we do review tree canopy. So currently, we require through a developer to make a landscape plan, that they indicate what their trees that they're proposing, what this average standard canopy height or canopy, uh, coverage is in a plan. And so that is in typically a table that indicates, you know, we comply with it, we have eighteen percent, there's fifteen, that's, that's required, something of that nature. And they, they show that on, on a plan sheet. So that is something that we often have, you know, Public Works, the double check, you know, make sure the tree species, et cetera, those are things. But planning can also take a look at that from a perspective. So, so to, to review that, I don't feel is a, a large burden.
Just a clarification on that. If you did have an ice cream shop that took up, had fifty feet of frontage on Main Street, would there be a different level of review for that tree canopy requirement for somebody like that?
Oh, hundred percent. I mean, Main Street's kind of a, a challenging example, just because typically there isn't a tear down and rebuild. You know, most of the time, this would, this comes into effect when there's actually site changes. So, you know, the, the ice cream shop that goes in, their frontage is, you know, public frontage that already has, you know, all those amenities in there, well, penny, you know, with the project downtown plan, of course. You know, if, if you're talking more about Littleton Boulevard, and you have a site that would, say, remove a building, put something new up, yeah, we would look at it from the perspective of, do they have sufficient landscaping? There's other provisions that just canopy coverage to, there's parking lot and perimeter landscape.
You don't do that review for downtown Main Street property because it's in a different zone district, or just because it just obviously doesn't make sense? And so you just exempt them sort of?
It's an existing building, so it wouldn't trigger site plan review. When Littleman moved in, all they needed was a building permit.
Yeah, it's a change of occupancy, rather than like a site plan.
A new building.
Yeah, buildings.
Either a rebuild or a vacant lot that's a new structure.
Some of them, yeah. Though technically, originally, Littleman, Littletonbury was an adaptive reuse of an existing building. I think, in my thought experiment, if I had a, an acre parcel, and I was building a big house on it, an acre, full acre, you would not normally do a tree plan submitted for the city, right? Single family, trashed homes on an acre?
So the neighborhood, the neighborhood section in the code that would govern all, you know, MFR all the way to ACR, does require a certain number of trees to be planted. So if you are removing a home, and you're building a new one, it states in there, and there's a lot fewer, a landscape plan is not required, but you have to prove that you're going to plant, forget if it's four trees, something of that nature.
It varies from three to eight, depending on sound district.
Yeah. So there, and there's also some turf requirements. So we do take a look at a number of things that you would have to prove out, even on a, a tear down and rebuild, regardless of the zone district.
Is there a way, and this is late in game, you probably replied something like this, the very beginning, it, the, of ten one three six B, it cites Tables A two and A three in the appendix, which are shrubs and ground cover. And then in the next one, it says, go to Appendix A of the tree manual. Is there any way to pull all of these documents together, or all of these things together, and just have it in one place? Back to sort of Patrick's point at the beginning, because it, it, it seems, it seems very irritating to me as just someone who would, who's tried to muddle through this. I can't imagine what it's like for someone who's trying to get things approved and might be on a timeline and, and, and things like that. It just would be beneficial to have, I think, that in the same spot. And I know that, I think this was, I went back to what, what, what you and Reed had probably talked about, is to leave that, that, some of it in here while, while pulling out part of the tree plan. But could we just call it like a landscape plan and just stick everything in one document? And, and just do it that way? It seems simpler to me, at least.
It's similar, but sort of separating the trees from general landscape.
Yeah, yeah.
They kind of go together.
Right. I was one that we had kind of had some discussion with, and there was, there was definitely push from planning staff to keep really more of those, especially like zone, district-specific items in the ULUC, and moving those technical items, like the tree protection zone. One of those technical items that really planning staff has a very difficult time trying to parse out and interpret. And when we don't have, when Public Works is under resource, it's a portion of the code that just does kind of fall to the wayside. So that was one of those things where we saw that, you know, it, it is important and that, but that is something that logically lives more in the tree manual, but whereas these canopy coverage requirements, planting requirements according to zone, district, because some districts are supposed to, you know, help create like a sense of place, that those really belong more in the ULUC. And that, that is a point well taken, and we kind of, again, wrestled with it, is how many documents are we having people refer to? We do take that point, because we, we are the ones trying to juggle all of that. We do hear the complaints from, from applicants, that, you know, it can be kind of cumbersome to look to. But in terms of who the best voices are and to be kind of leading that conversation and guiding and, you know, housing those documents, or some of these regulations, that it makes more sense to migrate some of this over to Public Works, where the expertise lives in-house.
I can appreciate that you had the conversation, and that this was the decision. But this also comes back to sort of one of those weird oddities now, to where something like the, i- i- it feels as if like the shrubs and ground cover are going to be harder to change than the tree canopy plan, because the tree canopy plan seems to be easier to change, and this now becomes very rigid and hard to change. So it, I just want them to sort of kind of have, play by the same rules to a certain degree. I, I don't, if that makes any sense whatsoever? I mean, it's, it, it just, it feels as if the, the shrubs and the ground covers, oh, they, maybe they just don't matter as much as the trees, or something to that effect. And, and they, they aren't getting their own plan, but they, but the, the, the weird part of it is, is the, the tree plan seems easier to edit, make changes to and the like, than the ULUC will ever be. So I, I would advocate either for, for probably all of it to kind of be in one spot, which is either here or there. I, it, it, it doesn't matter to me which one, it's just I would like it all in the same general spot. But that might be, at this late in the game, too big a, big of a thing.
In terms of rigidity, it would still be within the code, so we have the ability to, if there's concern about finding the document or having them all together, we have the ability to link. But right now, I think Appendix A is currently linked, so it takes you all the way down to the bottom of the ULUC. And so that was what our, that's what our intention was to do, was to link specifically A two for the shrub list, and then A three for the ground cover list. And the way that the code is currently written, so it's a selection of plant material, is from A two, A three of the appendix, and then the selection of trees from Appendix A. So that is still within the code, and so that would still be that, I guess, rigidity that I believe you're talking about, that it would still be written within the code, that if someone were to violate that subsection two, that they did not choose a selection of trees selected from Appendix A, we still have the ability to enforce against that.
So I have, the way that I, I read, and this is probably too technical, I should probably do this offline, but it says, comply with the diversity goals listed in Table A dash two and A, and Table A dash three, which are the two other ones that we've been talking about, preferred plantings, the city code. And when I look at the code, I, when I can click on it, it takes me right to it, hundred percent right. Perin I I, like on the next page, says, the selection of trees shall be selected from Appendix A, approved species tree list in the city's tree manual, not, because we're, we're completely obliterating Appendix A.
Table A one.
Table A one. So you're referring to two different appendices?
We can rename it.
So, I, I, I would prefer that everything play by the same, be in the same document and play by the same rules, I suppose, is kind of what I'm, what I'm getting at. Just because these feel like two different documents that have two different levels of scrutiny, as far as when they get edited, who sees it, what happens to it, and what, what goes on with it. And to separate out shrubs from trees seems, it, it just, it doesn't seem, it, it just seems like we're just saying it because we can, because trees are more important for, because we have a bunch of people who are angry about trees right now.
Well, there's a whole gray area.
Is there a hierarchy?
Some trees are considered shrubs, and some shrubs are considered trees. So there's that.
Yeah, so we.
It was in part to try to keep those landscaping elements, but Commissioner Coronado, your point is well taken, that this does still, in effect, separate those out. But because the landscape plan and those landscaping elements are still housed in the ULUC, those were elements that, again, we were wanting to keep in there, is really trying not to fracture the landscaping elements at all, or at least as little as possible, because the tree manual is really intended to be more of that technical, technical document, similar to LEDs, specifically for trees. But then there are those landscaping elements, and so there is that overlap, and it does create some confusion. And I think we can certainly re-implement Appendix A, A one back into it to kind of keep that consistency. But keeping the elements of the landscaping plan is why the shrubs and ground covers.
I, I think that what you said there at the end, putting Appendix A back into the code, even though it's the same as the Appendix A in the tree, would probably be a wise decision. That, that's just my, that's probably a split the baby sort of, sort of decision there.
Correct.
Yep. And then, and then if one's different than the, exactly, which is why they should all be in one spot, but.
I'd like to, I'd like to second Dan's general principles that Commissioner Reed was just talking about, which is, one of the big negatives to any of this bureaucratic structure is that it becomes very complicated, both to parse as a, as an applicant, for us to interpret. And, and when you have all these different pieces residing in different places, it has different scales of editability, and it also has different sets of authorities. I, I just, I worry in general with where we've gone, we just keep hyper complexifying things. I, I wouldn't mind at all that all of this, all of these ideas, landscaping ideas, live in a LEDs-like document for landscape, and that would be fine. I mean, I would, I would love it to be one place, that, so that may or may not be feasible. But I, I want the idea that our role here has good, people are just in good governance, and to help the people trying to do things for the community, to, to simplify their tech. Clarity and simplicity are of great value. So I just, I, I just wanted to make that sort of high-level idea, that that should drive a lot of what we're trying to do here. And, and that simplification or unification of things is of, of value to me, and I, I hear that in what Dan is saying. And I don't know how much of that can be done in, in the timeframes we have, but it's, it's certainly a concern. I'm just second what I was saying.
To close on to, I don't know, Commissioner Almond's request, like the burden on staff of scaling and review. I guess I'm thinking in terms of not either work, both hands. So we have the, the tree manual, and we have the ULUC, right? So the, the trigger on the scaling could be written into the zoning as a process procedure policy, and, and the, the tree manual applies to everything. Really, the way it's written, it applies, personally, to private property, it's a guideline for private property owners and best practices, and, but it has teeth on the side of like permits and licensing and mitigation for development of commercial properties or multifamily. So I, but, so maybe it's a moot point in terms of that, you know, maybe in the ULUC, it already, the triggers are already there, or maybe we can look at those, make sure that they're appropriate, so that the small developers that want to come here, we do make it easy for them. They don't trigger that requirement, but there is a guideline there in the tree manual.
So suggesting that the parameters, the scaling that we're discussing be placed into the ULUC, maybe whether it's by zone, or maybe it's by?
Parcel size.
Parcel size, placing that kind of applicability, within the applicability section, I guess, of the greenscape provisions, I'm kind of thinking out loud. And then that way, with the applicability, if it, if it's above or under that, it would either apply or not apply. Is that kind of the tie, and then leave the tree manual as is, as a very, a broader document? Okay.
And then, you know, in terms of the concern about, say, like a duplex triggering, different requirements of a single-family residence, but it could be based on the zone district as opposed to the land use, right?
Yeah, I think that's where we're, like, as far as, like, if you say it applies to multifamily, you know, what, neighborhood, commercial, commercial mixed use, right? So basically, you know, from multifamily up in terms of, you know, in terms of your, your, your kind of user flexibility standards, right? And then have it kick in at, you know, half acre or larger, or whatever, like something like that, you know?
So dangerous categories, plus.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, by the zone, yeah, by zoning, but then also by size, right? So if you're doing this small redevelopment on Littleton Boulevard, you know, in your small business, then you get more flexibility than you do if you're Costco. Because, yeah, I don't, I, I don't think anybody wants to be letting, you know, big development companies off the hook for this by any means, but we want to make sure that, because that's, yeah, the, the more complex, some of these codes get more complex, some of these requirements get, the only people that benefit are the big developers, because they're the only ones that have the resources to tackle this, so.
Okay, so we covered, we got the scaling, which you've gotten, right? A tossy. Okay, and then secondly, a consolidation of somehow the policy around shrubs, trees, making those more consolidated.
It may not be possible, it's fine.
I, I thought we also raised a concern about public input to this process.
Yes, we did, that's right.
I guess my question to that is, what's driving the schedule? I mean, would, would there be an opportunity, I guess, to push it out three months? I know, I know there's goals for staff to update the ULUC and implement this tree manual, and we'd love to see it, and I, but is there like something looming out there that we really want to get ahead of?
It would be the LEDs, and it would be the canopy philosophy, if I'm not mistaken. I know that council has been concerned about the amount. So we, you know, we have talked about, I don't, I don't know about three months out, but I know that there are sections, and I'm only unfortunately on page thirty of my review of two hundred and fifty pages of LEDs, so there are sections in there that reference tree items, things that, you know, may have some redundancy with the current proposed tree manual that we want to, once again, just make a reference to. We don't want the same information for fear that, you know, at one point, one document's going to be changed, the other's not going to be. So we want to make sure that those pertinent parts in the LEDs actually reference the tree manual where it needs to reference it. I know the canopy philosophy is something else that was discussed, and it was something that, you know, we as staff feel strongly that it should be in the tree manual, and currently is within the ULUC, and I have no idea what section. One, three, six, something. But it was one thing that we wanted to update, but at the same time as we were updating that with the tree manual pushing forward, there's a lot of conflicting provisions, meaning that if we went forward with eight four, then there would be conflicting provisions between eight four, the tree manual, and the ULUC as it currently sits. And a lot of the information that we wanted to update, or that we're now updating in the tree manual, it's not necessarily. it's not necessarily outdated within the ULC or the current eight-four. Um, it's just the use of different language, um, is what we saw. Um, and we wanted to modernize some of it and clarify some of it, um, as well. And then things like add, you know, a reduction for affordable fees, um, or affordable housing. And so the main push for it is LEDs. I think, you know, I think it wasn't until a month ago that we realized as we're reviewing the LEDs that there's a lot that could be streamlined from removing those references and removing those redundancies. Um, if we were to, um, you know, it's obviously something that I wanna discuss with staff. This is me talking off the top of my head. If it's something that we wanted to push out, um, a few months.
The LEDs will get pushed as well.
Um, no, not necessarily. Um, the LEDs would not get pushed out and.
LEDs, once enacted, LEDs can be modified by the director.
City engineer.
City engineer. So.
Yes.
So we could, all the line items pointing out of LEDs that would ultimately connect to the tree manual, could say for the, the draft tree manual, they could be directed to the draft. And when it was, when a few months the tree manual's adopted, the chief city engineer can just change the LEDs to be appropriate. It's not like we have to go back to council to make those edits.
It seems like that document, once enacted, is actually very easy to modify.
There is, I don't, I can't remember.
With the LEDs.
I think for some more substantive changes, we have to go back to council, but for clarifications, interpretations, the city engineer is able to change it. Um, so that is a possibility, Commissioner. Um, I think, you know, if we were to do that, we would still have to come to you with ULC amendments because of the two fifty per inch um, that I know has been pushing forward. I suspect that there's all, I mean, this is like four or five different code provisions along with the LEDs combining in my head, so I apologize. Um, um, I think there might have to be some reference point updates potentially. Um, so it's doable, it's just a shift in how we're gonna be moving forward.
Make a suggestion real quick. I would ask y'all to reach out to the council and see if they want public comment on this. Cause ultimately, ultimately, it's them that is going to be making the decision. It's ultimately them who's going to be paying for it or not at a ballot box. Um, so I would ask them if they would, they would think that it would be a good idea to get public comment on this before it's approved. And I'll live with whatever, whatever their decision is, I suppose, because ultimately, it's their decision. I mean, I don't know if that's a, that's a good solution or not.
I, I also would suggest that, that it seems to me that the, the, the tree, the fee structure and that two hundred and fifty dollars, that, that maybe that, we have that amendment put forward as a code change to exist in the ULC so that you at least get that over the line. So that, because that sounds like there's a political will to have this enacted as soon as possible. But it doesn't mean we have to have the rest of the entire package of stuff approved. And maybe that would be modified again after, when we go back to the full tree manual part. But it seems like, it, it seems like we could easily get that section, just the, the formula used for the, the.
Fee and lieu.
The fee and lieu. If you, if, just, just say, propose that along with the LEDs on August ninth or whatever, to fix it so that the LEDs refers to something real that's been enacted in the code. I just still wanted to go back to table, to page, the, the tree canopy coverage requirements. I, I, I just page fifteen of the ordinance document, so table ten dash one, three, six E. You know, the, the, those numbers, I, I would like to know how and what drove those calculations.
These were suggested by our, um, previous city of Forest, or unfortunately, I don't have that information.
Were they at all any work with, um, the consultant? Were they generated in conjunction with consultant budget?
I thought those were previous city foresters' suggestions. I just, I, the one that really concerns me is, is, is thirty percent coverage on MFR. The others went up five percent each. Uh, business commercial got ten and multifamily went to thirty percent. I just, if those, those, those numbers, it's a lot like parking minimums. I mean, I feel like we, we really need to have some kind of good justification for what those numbers come from and what they mean in terms of the parcels. If we're gonna increase those numbers, I'd like to just have a good understanding of why. And, uh, it's one of those things that maybe public comment should be on, but, um, it seems onerous to me. The multifamily with thirty percent seems a lot. It's gonna create buildings that are small with lots of canopy around them. And maybe some people love that, but we're in a, a situation where housing affordability is a really big concern. And that's a pretty big demand, bigger than we're making on, you know, other similar properties. So I, I just wanna know if there's a really strong rationale for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, uh, the sort of scaled approach to, you know, what triggers, um, these rules, um, works for, uh, the downtown when really the most key point there is, you know, maintaining our, our streetscape and tree canopy. So I don't know what that percentage looks like on a plan. Uh, when you're really, to me, the big concern is addressing the walkability and the public right-of-way side.
That's like a whole another zone that is of great interest. Yeah, that kind of, the way we've, really great, I, I just wish that we were, we had a sort of public right-of-way set of expectations, uh, instead of just parcel by parcel.
We do have street tree plantings according to linear feet, typically one tree per forty linear feet.
Yeah, but the individual property owner's the one that's responsible for that.
Yes, yes, they are.
I'm saying that public right-of-way canopy trees would be a public, public realm for our city to handle and be concerned, have planned for and have strategies regarding, just as we're asking the parks, SSPRD to do the same for their public open space, the parks.
Is it become the business district's problem at this point?
It's possibly gonna be the, the downtown of, for areas that are lucky enough to have. Broadway, quarters like even parts of Santa Fe and, and Littleton Boulevard do not have a DDA or anything like it. And, uh, you can say there, Silverstems owner has multiple times complained to me about the street trees, both on the median and his parcel, and he wanted to remove them. And he was told he couldn't, that the, the city had purview over them. He's been going back and forth with Mike Gent over his much malign trees that block views of his store and other things like that. And he couldn't, he was told he could, I mean, I, I often, I was like, I thought that was private trees that you could just, apparently not. Uh, and the median trees are the city's jurisdiction, so that, and then, and Mike, suddenly two of the trees are gone. So I, I often wonder like what, the reality of how these things play out in the actual world and how they are in this document is like a whole another thing.
Okay, so. Oh, go ahead.
One point, if every tree was cut down to see a sign, we would have no trees in this city. So just.
In a sense, but I, I was like, I was like, well, those are, those are valuable to the public, those trees. You, you may not want them because you want a billboard of your company, but we, but they're technically on his property. Technically, those are his trees. So, uh, that's what I'm wondering is like, apparently they're on the right-of-way, they.
They're owned by the city, but the landowner needs to maintain them.
Which is very common for.
It's a very odd arrangement.
Okay, so the last.
Shoveling your sidewalk, things like that.
So we talked about some areas that we wanted to look at, and you mentioned those we've already covered. And the last was the harder look at the tree canopy percentage as well as the fees in lieu of, right?
I understood for the, for the canopy coverage, Commissioner Santana, you'd like some sort of rationale for the thirty percent.
Or any of those changes, like.
Okay.
Is there evidence that, that what we had wasn't working? Uh, you know, that those numbers needed to be changed, uh, and what?
Because we've lost five percent of our canopy, and we're gonna continue to lose canopy because of the trees that we have in the city. Uh, that's twenty-five percent being ash trees that are about to all die. So the only way to increase the canopy is to continue to increase these numbers.
Well, five percent of tree losses over the city will probably never be made up for by a small number of developments in the period. Like, that, we would have to redevelop to get, we'd have to have almost every parcel get five, be, be a, put in a lot of trees to make that up. We're gonna need to put those trees in. But to make up a five percent loss, we're gonna need residential properties to have trees added. We need our parks to have trees. The forty-two businesses a year that maybe come through community development that have a five percent increase in trees on their land is, it's gonna be a marginal increase in trees. They're not gonna make up that five. So is that, that doesn't really solve that loss of trees, because it's such a tiny fraction.
But I would argue that it's one helping mechanism that we're doing to mitigate that loss.
Sure. This, this only applies to redevelopment too, right? So if someone just like moves in and gets a building permit to redo the inside of it, it doesn't apply, correct?
Correct.
So it has to be complete redevelopment, say, a scrape and rebuild is what it's gonna have to be for the most part, or something that's vacant that they build in.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I think what I'd like to see is that, that, that maybe the, some of the more recent commercial developments that we've seen could accommodate, or, you know, multifamily residential that we've seen, you know, the permits that have come through, that they could accommodate that thirty percent. Like, because, because there's, there's something, yes, I agree that this is, this has helped, you know, it's, it's a, it's a way to, to try to up our, our tree canopy coverage, and we, we wanna do that. But at the same time, there's also a little bit of a, we're, we're, we're in a sense penalizing somebody else, right? Like, if I have ash trees on my property, right, and I do, right? The idea that a new commercial development has to come in and make up for the loss of tree canopy on my property feels a little unfair. And that's, I, I, I struggle with that to be like, well, you need to solve this problem because my trees are dying, right? That's, and, and I'm, I'm exaggerating, I'm being a little facetious, but at the same time, there's, yeah, there is a city, you, you're right, there's a citywide problem. But to, to put this burden specifically on, on this smaller new development rather than, you know, kind of also refocusing how we can get some of these places more in our, in our parks and, you know, into the hands of homeowners who have ash trees through our tree program, right? Um, definitely wanna, you know, definitely wanna leverage those programs. I mean, I've planted a number of trees through the city's tree program, so, um, I think that's a huge, it's a huge way to benefit the community. But, uh, how do, I don't know how to do that, or I'd like to see if, if there's a way to do that without kind of, um, putting too much more burden on some of these new developments, especially, you know, the ones that are maybe, you know, smaller in scale in terms of lot size, right? Smaller, you know, not, not these big, deep-pocketed, out-of-state developers, you know, but Littleton Brewing Company, right? You know, the.
And we'll, we'll, we'll dig into that too.
Okay.
I think if, uh, one thing is it's triggered by scale and certain.
Yeah, well, that'll solve the problem.
It'll solve some of the problem. But I also wanna make sure that we understand that every, when we get, when a city like Littleton puts in a twenty or thirty unit apartment complex, like we saw at West Dry Creek, you know, that, those people that come to live in that unit are, so I was looking on the satellite views, there's a seventy-seven acre development going on in Jeffco right now, seventy, seventy-seven homes on seventy-eight acres. The amount of tree losses that when we, we don't get something over, pencil that out and worked out here, those same homes here, we have a lot of tree loss regionally because of the sprawl effect, because we have, the same units go in on acre lots on a seventy-eight acre redevelopment. And so when we don't, when, and somebody can't get a seventy-eight unit thing over line because we require thirty percent trees on that parcel here in the city, which is a city, which is an urban area in a sense. It's a first-tier suburb of Denver, we're basically killing trees in other places. And so I understand that our tree loss is there, but regionally, we're seeing a lot of greenfield development that's driven by the fact that cities like Littleton make it, owner isn't difficult to build the homes where we have infrastructure, we have pipes, we have Denver water taps. So it's, it, I don't see it just strictly as our tree canopy. When I think about it, I think about the loss of trees along the front range in general.
It might be worth to know, like, some of these major things that have gone, that have gone over our debt, over our deaths over the past like year or two, what percentages were they hitting? Cause I, I know that they were going over, I just wonder by how much? Cause they, they, they kinda have to go over at least a little bit.
You say?
I, I think a lot of them were in that, like, it felt like some of them were hitting like up to twenty-four percent even. It felt like sometimes, maybe even, it, it felt like they were on the high side.
I think it's, with the larger ones, they have huge parking lots, so they put in fifty trees in the island. That's the, so that's why I say the trigger, when you're, when you're building an eighteen-unit building on a quarter-acre slot, that's gonna be harder to get thirty percent. And the grade's written now is they gotta do thirty percent of their little half acre. Uh, it's a lot easier when you're building like Columbine Square rebuild, you've got massive parking lots, plenty of quote trees, you know.
It's probably why the scaling would.
So the scaling might be a big, important way to address some of that concern.
Okay, I think, do you feel like, I feel like that we've covered most of those issues and discussed them. Is there anything else, any more comment?
I'd say broadly, there is a sort of, uh, sort of conflicting balance here, I think, between the desire to, uh, build more, sort of missing middle housing or allow for additional density within existing neighborhoods and keeping some level of tree canopy, uh, or increasing tree canopy, or even preserving tree canopy. Because when somebody builds, say, an ADU, they're probably gonna have to take out a tree or two. Maybe they can mitigate it, but maybe they have more, uh, lot coverage there where it's impossible or harder to. And I, I totally agree with the concern about placing more burdens on, uh, small urban developments too. But I, I think that trees in general, trees in particular, I mean, landscaping in general, it's, it's a fairly small cost, and it's also a pretty small footprint. Like, when you're talking like a twenty or thirty percent canopy, the tree itself is only a couple square feet, right? Even with the tree protection zone, it's a relatively small area. That thirty percent is the canopy that, uh, you know, over, so that's not, I don't think it's as much of a burden as it might be perceived to be in terms of what you can't build on that lot. If it's placed right, if it's done, and we have requirements for, you know, qualified landscape architects to be doing some of the work, especially in commercial properties, if it's done right, it's not gonna be a huge impact, it's not really gonna be a huge cost.
I, I, yeah, I, I, it, there's, there's cases where that can be. What, what I'm, what, what you're kinda circling around to on some level too is, one, I think we said that we weren't gonna leverage this as a requirement on, um, anything below a multifamily residential, right? So when it comes to, you know, small lot, medium, large acreage residential, if somebody's building an ADU, that's not gonna trigger this, um, this, right? What we are getting into those is, you know, when you talk about some of these small-scale developments, right? So if you are gonna, um, you know, convert a, you know, or, you know, depending on where you are in that neighborhood commercial, right? If you're gonna build a small, you know, townhouse unit in the, you know, along that, that corridor or something. If you are, i- if you're on a small enough lot, um, and yes, you can plant these trees, but you know, when you start talking about canopy, you start to get back into the situation that I was kinda talking about a little bit at the beginning, where you've got tree branches that are over the house, right? Or over the structure, or right up against the structure, which becomes something of a fire hazard, right? Where you, you don't have that fire break for, you know, somebody shoots off the firework and they light the, they light the tree on fire. But if the tree hangs over the house, well, now all of a sudden, you've got a house on fire, right? So you need to keep that, you, you need to keep that little, you wanna keep that little bit of fire break between the, you know, between your, your vegetation and your house, right? Even though, I, I realize we're not in a wooie here, but it, it still applies to some extent, especially because what we see with certain, you know, obvious things getting hotter and drier, and we see fires spreading in, you know, generally kind of suburban areas too, right? Is that it, it's one thing to say, okay, well, yeah, you've got the room for the tree, it's fine, right? But then once that tree grows up and that canopy is mature, are you still in a situation where you're, you're comfortable and safe? You know, if somebody shoots a firework into the tree?
Probably always gonna have that with private property because people.
You, you are. You are, you are. What I'm, all I'm saying is that I. What I'm, all I'm saying is that I don't know that, you know, we, and if you want to do that, I guess that's your call. I don't think the city should necessarily mandate that you squeeze those trees onto your property, you know, when we're talking about like a little quarter acre property that you need to, you need to make sure that you squeeze that thirty percent tree canopy onto a property where in twenty years, that's going to, that could constitute a hazard. So, yeah, I mean, it works both ways, where it's, yeah, you can fit it in and, you know, you're talking about the tree, they're very thin, but, you know, when they grow up, you know, it's, it's better and worse because, yes, you get more tree canopy when it grows up, but you also get that.
I think, you see, there's a lot to discuss here. I'd love to have a little more time to talk about it. Yeah, to Commissioner Verdua, which is point, you know, if, if council wants public engagement around this, I'd support that too. If they don't, I'd support that as well.
It's, it's sort of them that ends up paying for it, but I think, I think the moral of your story is that we need more firework enforcement. My dog would wholeheartedly agree.
Yeah, well, and I think that, I think it just reinforces, I think it reinforces the need for a scale, like, you know, to, to have this kick in at a scale, right? Because, you know, a lot of properties could, yeah, easily accommodate that thirty percent, you know, coverage, you know, when they've got giant parking lots, right? Versus, yeah, versus a smaller, you know, a smaller scale development that may not be able to accommodate that, so.
Yeah, we want to be sensitive to initial development. We want this to be, allow good corridor development in small businesses and small structures, maybe residential or over commercial. And, and things like big percentages of canopy can be a trick when you want downtown like places, and that's going to affect our corridors. That's why it should trigger based on something, I think, you know, it's been generally applied.
So it sounds like we are not, I'm going to wrap this meeting up, can you tell? It sounds like then we're not ready, we don't feel like as a commission that we're ready to go forward with the tree manual. I mean, that sounds evident, right? That we need a little more time to look at and, and also find out what, what options there are available to address the concerns that were brought up tonight around scaling and.
Yeah. As a note, I do have to caution the commissioners that eight-four in the tree manual and annual are not under the charlie as already ULC. So, you know, kind of just hearing the concerns tonight and what this commission would like to see moving forward, I think, you know, and I'll, I already set a meeting to debrief with staff tomorrow. I, I believe that the best course of action is to keep what, what is in the ULUC currently within the ULUC to, to go ahead and revise the tree canopy formula so that we can at least move forward with that because there is a push for that. And take a step back on scaling, on consolidation, on public input, and the canopy coverage, which is within the ULUC currently, so that red line will be removed for the time being. One item on scaling is that, you know, the tree manual was intended to, we didn't discuss scaling, and it, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't something that our consultants had discussed with us, at least not to my knowledge. But, you know, with the scaling aspect of it, there are concerns, at least from my perspective, because a lot of it is tied to the right of way in terms of location standards or panic cannot do with the right of way. And so, you know, there are items that staff is going to want to consider that we will bring back to you in terms of potentially scaling this because, for example, if we were to say five units for a multifamily residential, you know, I don't want that five person or that four, four unit, uh, structure to say, oh, well, you know, the tree manual's not applicable to us, I'm just going to put this tree right in front of the stop sign. And so, you know, we do have location standards, we do have other requirements that are tied directly to our right of way within the tree manual. And so that, that is the broader applicability to basically everyone, right? Because we do want to protect our right of way. So I think, I think the best course of action right now is to, to keep the ULUC as is, kind of, you know, make the amendments for the canopy loss fee, remove the canopy coverage percentage, uh, concerns and numbers that increases. And then in terms of eight-four in the tree manual, I think that's something that, you know, they are tied together. So that one is we're going to have to kind of take a step back in terms of our timeline to take a look at it. But that's kind of what I'm seeing, hearing, and what my notes kind of indicate for tonight. Does that seem reasonable?
Oh, good, thank you. Thank you for summing everything up. Did a good job. And thank you all.
On the twenty-eighth, we will see the, the dollar value thing then.
That's our intention, yeah.
We'll, we'll discuss that tomorrow.
Okay.
There's still a probability that you will see an update on the twentieth, and we haven't ruled that out.
Okay, so, um, it sounds like we may or may not have another, a hearing on, what's the next one?
We got whether or not it's on the twentieth. So, yes, there will be a meeting on the twentieth, just as a general business item.
Okay, and then, is that it? Anybody else? Okay, so with that, I adjourn this study session at eight forty-one PM. Thank you, thank you to all the staff for coming and talking with us.